To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, welcome, everyone, this evening. We've got a few items to go through here in terms of business and reporting. And I will start out by saying we're going to hear from School District 102 in a minute. We often have done this over the years. It's a good way to exchange information about what's happening at the school district. We've got a very important resolution, a wonderful milestone. We've got people here celebrating the 100th anniversary of Illinois being the first state to ratify the 19th Amendment, giving a woman's right to vote. So that's a big deal, and we're going to acknowledge that. We've got some appointments to make to our boards and commissions. We've -- we're bringing some more people into Village Service this evening, and we're also going to be doing some reappointments as well. A couple of other things, we'd like to welcome our newest trustee, Beth Augustine. Welcome to Village Service, although you've been serving the village for many years in different capacities. Beth, we're delighted to have you with us with your first meeting. We offer our condolences to Mark Berklin, our village attorney, who lost your mom as the weekend began. So our condolences to you. And we also have another milestone we're talking about, and that is tomorrow is the 140th anniversary of the Village of LaGrange. And that was a Wednesday night in 1879. It was not an easy vote. It was a contested vote. In fact, on June 10th, things were pretty tense around here. People had moved 13 miles outside the city of Chicago to get away from it all, and here some citizens wanted to make it a city again, a village. And really, it was to organize, to incorporate, and really start a village that would be worthy of its residents, worthy of the green canopy of trees and those who had invested out here in this region. So it's quite a milestone, 140 years, and we'll be celebrating that in the weeks and months to come. We also honor the Pet Parade. The Pet Parade was a great success. We had wonderful weather. You never really do know, but the storm clouds skirted to the north and parted, and we want to thank the LaGrange Business Association for the carnival and the many things that they've done to make the carnival a success in partnership with the Pet Parade. And as always, the Pets and Pals Charity, which is a separate charity, did a wonderful job. And we also like to thank our village personnel, our police and fire and public works, for the Herculean effort in getting the village ready for what is really the beginning of our summer. We want to thank the LaGrange Garden Club. They have designed and planted the beautiful planters throughout the downtown. It is really a crowning touch to our streetscape. It's something that we can never take for granted. These are volunteers, and it's a real difference-maker in the village, and we really appreciate and have immense pride and sincere appreciation for the hard work that that takes. I want to thank the American Legion for the -- since our last meeting, the Memorial Day festivities here in LaGrange, organized on the north campus east lawn. And each year, a meaningful event, well-attended, and really something that we also have as part of our civic calendar here in the village. We are going to have a new fire chief, and we're pleased to announce that. Terrence Vavre has been selected as the next chief of police -- or fire, sorry. Sorry. No special news. Sorry, Kurt. Fire department, he has 40 years of experience in the fire service, most recently as the fire chief for Norwood Park Fire District, and previously as the chief of the Buffalo Grove Fire Department. He was selected from a group of highly talented and qualified individuals. I want to thank the members of the board for keeping a praise of the process. Want to thank you, trustee Kukler, for helping us lead that selection process. All the trustees rotate over the years in helping us with village managers and fire and police chiefs, and we really appreciate the extra time. It's a very important part of the process. And so Chief Vavre is scheduled to be appointed and sworn in at our next regular board meeting on June 24th. And we've got, after a highly engaged, wonderful process with our Community Economic Development Commission, and citizens, and stakeholders, and members of the board, and the LaGrange Business Association, you're going to see a fresh look on the downtown streets of LaGrange. We've had a great brand over the last several years, actually going on a decade-plus with the "Ah LaGrange" logo. We've got a logo that's a prominent logo, which will be somewhat featured over there with the tagline Vibrant, and it'll be paired with certain iconic LaGrange streetscapes or archways from Stone Avenue Station or Victorian features. We've also got a streetscape as a secondary brand, and again, that will be used on our marketing, our cosponsorships with events. And I want to thank Russ Roberto from the Community Economic Development Commission. He led this effort with others, and you can imagine in a brand how many opinions that you've got to hurt, including people like myself, who wants something just a little bit like this or a little bit like this. And we really had good success in channeling that charity. Want to thank you for your help as well on that. We're still going to tweak it a little bit, and sometimes you might see the street lamp be patriotic or different colors depending on the event or the type of event, and we'll work with that as it evolves. With that, we don't have anything else to report on the larger scale. Let's see, Andre, village managers' report.
Thank you. IDOT continues to make progress on the resurfacing of LaGrange Road from 31st Street to Joliet Road, and IDOT anticipates that the work south of 47th Street will be completed within the next two weeks. The work north of 47th Street is expected to begin soon thereafter. The work is -- the overall work is expected to be completed in September of 2019, and the village has been working closely with IDOT on facilitating this project. Work on the reconstruction of the Village Hall surface parking lot at the corner of Harris and 6th Avenue also began this week. The reconstruction of Lot 8 at Harris and Madison Avenues is scheduled to begin later this week. The village is working with the LaGrange Business Association and business community to minimize impacts as much as possible and to advertise that LaGrange is very much open for business during construction. Special events such as the farmer's market and craft show are also continuing as planned. For more information regarding the status of these construction projects currently active in LaGrange, please visit the village's website at www.villageoflaGrange.com/construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andre. All right, at this point, we're very pleased to welcome superintendent of District 102, Kyle Schumacher, and the board president, Brian Anderson, who are here to give us a presentation and catch us up a little bit on the goings-on at School District 102. So we'll turn it over to you, gentlemen, and welcome.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
Yep. So President Livingston, trustees, audience members, thank you again for having us come and present about District 102. My name is Brian Anderson. I'm the school board president in District 102, so this is my fifth year on the board and third year as board president.
And Kyle Schumacher, superintendent of 102, and this is starting my fifth year here in LaGrange, LaGrange Park in Brookfield.
Yep. So we have a couple of topics to cover tonight. One is the outcomes of the district, educational and financial, and then future focus areas of growth in the district. So if you look at this next slide, you know, I'll let you read it. This is the vision, not uncommon for organizations to have, but you know, now, two years ago, the district with Dr. Schumacher's help, you know, we decided to go back through and look at our mission, vision, and values, you know, and really work collaboratively with our, you know, not only with staff and the board, but also with our community members to figure out what's right for District 102. You know, this vision encapsulates that. We want our children to be prepared, you know, prepared not only for their educational adventures, but you know, also to prepare them for life. You know, this is our opportunity, right, to make sure that they have a strong foundation and that they eventually come back, as so many people do, to this community and the communities that we support, you know, to do great things here. You know, I know Kyle's going to talk about the strategic plan, which is on the next slide, but really, it's that vision that really started the strategic plan, you know, for being formulated.
So as we look at the strategic plan, as Brian said, several years ago, about three years ago, actually, held a variety of meetings across the three communities, both in the district, in the community, and various community groups, as well as various school groups that we met. And through that, we really were looking at what direction should the district be heading? What is the direction that we want as a community for our students and for our community, recognizing that the school is a vital part of any thriving community? And I think if we look at Brookfield, LaGrange Park, and LaGrange specifically, our district is a star in that flag, so to speak. And we wanted to look at things from student development. We recognize that culture and relationships within the school were very important, and if you look back at the vision statement, it really talks about respectful discourse. It talks about that engagement that is vital for our students, but also looking at that from both within the school environment and outside of the school environment. We realized that in order for our students to be successful, teachers are an important part of that, teachers and the other adults that they come in contact with. So ensuring that we had strong teachers, people that were of highest quality in all the levels were important. And then finally, looking at our process and financials, and Brian's going to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, you know, just maybe to stay a second there, you know, I think even if you look at this, you know, we look at this from a lens of equity, you know, when, you know, not state-mandated things, but really, and truthfully, of how do we look at equity in our district and how do all children, you know, obtain what they need to be successful? You know, and I would further say, even if you were to walk into, say, Park Junior High and you look at their motto of "Be Kind," that seems very simplistic, right? Be kind, everybody understands that. But when you're talking about, you know, you're teaching this to young adults and really emphasizing what that means, and this idea of getting your arms around the children so that they, you know, will be successful, and they'll share, and the social-emotional learning is there, it becomes really, really important.
So as we look at the strategic plan goals, and as Brian said, equity is one of those things that surround it or is the foundation of all of our goals. These are the things that we look at to build and the lens at which we look through decisions that we're making within the district. Similar, we want to sort of just remind people of kind of what those boundaries are within our school district. So as I stated earlier, we are part of LaGrange, LaGrange Park, and part of Brookfield. You can see the bottom red area there at the bottom is Cossett Attendance Area, but even a part of Ogden Schools. Ogden School is actually in LaGrange, while most of the families who go to Ogden are from LaGrange Park. Ogden Avenue is kind of the dividing line, but except it goes up to Brewster and jogs around and some interesting sort of northern boundaries of LaGrange in particular. But Ogden and Cossett are served by the LaGrange community. So we want to talk a little bit about the district report card. And so all of this information, while perhaps small on these screens, can be obtained from looking at the Illinois School Report Card, which is what parents, as they're moving around, as people are moving to different communities, go and look at. Realtors look at this area to see how schools are doing. So we do have six schools in the district, Barnesdale, which is a kindergarten center, Cossett, Forest Road, Ogden, and Congress Park, which are kindergarten, are first-through-sixth grade buildings, and then Park Junior High, which is a seventh-grade campus. We have very limited mobility overall within our community, and we have schools that are recognized in the new recognition system that was passed by the state and the evidence-based funding model that are exemplary and -- commendable. So as we look at that, we have strong schools that are here. We have done a great job in trying to maintain and increase the academic achievement of our students.
Yeah, with Cossett School actually is the one that's listed as exemplary.
As we look into our demographic reports, this kind of just gives us an idea of where we are at. We've got just under 3,100 students. Our enrollment has stayed fairly consistently in that range between 3,000 and 99. Actually, that was as of October 1st, or we've gone up a little bit this year. It's stayed fairly consistent. The areas that we're seeing actually the most growth happens to be in the Forest Road community. That school, which is in LaGrange Park, we're seeing the most growth. Ogden, Cossett, we're seeing flat to slightly declining. It has depended upon the year with that, so we're actually looking at and will be doing a demographic study of our community, a census, through John Casarda, who's done a Casarda study here a number of years ago. Actually, all of the feeder districts to LT will be part of that Casarda study this year, looking at what are the changes, the shifts within our communities to give us some ideas on what we can expect for future populations.
Yeah, of one area that the Board of Education has a great deal to say is, is on the budget. You know, so the next two slides are going to talk about our instructional and operational spending and comparing that to the state. Now, you know, one of the first things that you'll see is, is that, you know, generally speaking, operational costs for us and even, you know, what they would say is instructional spending tend to be a little bit lower than the state, you know? And I know sometimes I'll get the question, well, we're not spending enough on children. That's not what this is intended to say. It's intended to say is that we're being mindful of what those expenditures are when they come to delivering a great education, which we deliver. You know, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, when we're taking, you know, and looking at these state benchmarks, it's important to know, especially in these two, that, you know, as being fiscal stewards of taxpayer dollars, that we're always mindful of what those expenditures look like, and we're critical about where we're going to invest and how we're going to invest. The second slide, more of an eye chart, not intended to confuse you all. You can find this on the district website as well. You know, I'll just point to the bottom. If green is expenditures, right, and, I mean, I'm sorry, green is revenue and orange are expenditures, you know, you'll see that, you know, over time, we are building a very good fund balance. By board policy, you know, our goal is right now to build 25%. That's not considered best-in-class. We're on roughly about a $41 million budget. You know, best-in-class around, you know, what you would say very sturdy schools is somewhere around 40 to 50%. Now, there's trade-offs, right? Because we're always going to invest in the schools, we're always going to invest in students, right? So things like STEM labs or, you know, reading interventionists, teachers, you know, those are things that we're willing to invest in, and that may change this a little bit. But our goal is to build a solvent school. So a couple of years ago, we had passed a referendum, you know, that the taxpayers granted us, you know, to allow us, you know, to change the trajectory of our five-year plan, you know? So instead of writing reports to the state saying, you know, why we're in this condition, why we continually spend down reserve, et cetera, you know, we're in a much different position now, where we're not only, you know, building revenue, but we are taking care of our expenditures, which are a very important part of this.
So again, I think on this chart, the thing to be looking at and the thing that we'll be monitoring is really looking at this reserve building. And we do anticipate that we will be close to or slightly above 30% within the next four years, and that's the trend that we want to continue doing as we monitor our budgets to ensure that we are -- our revenue is exceeding our expenditures in order to maintain that trajectory. When we look on to kind of the future, which is really what we want to talk about a little bit more here, is that future focus, it's really about the kids, right? Why are we here? Why do people move into the community? The majority of our community do not have children in the school, but many of them had children that went to school. And I would dare say that everybody in a community benefited from schooling at some point. Yes, there are home schools, and those are valuable, but education has been important to everybody at some point. We are -- we talked a little bit about the Casarda study that we'll be doing over this next year. The Casarda study that was done about eight years ago or so did show us trending in the direction that we are. And if you have seen a Casarda study, what he does is he looks at your area, at the area, and gives you kind of an A, B, or C choice, a little bit like the weatherman. It could snow, it could rain, it could be sunny, right? And what we found is that we tend to be trending about in the middle of what his, so option B, basically, of what he predicted. And so we are looking forward to that data to help us as we look at what we're doing as far as space. But not only space for classrooms, as Brian talked about, space for encouraging kids to build their science opportunities through STEAM, right? Science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And we want to continue to grow those things within our students, those hands-on opportunities. We have a science center that's located in, at Barnesdale School right now, but we want to expand the opportunities within the school. So one of the exciting things that Cossett PTC has done over this last year is through their fundraising, is they're going to be building and outfitting and helping us sort of pilot a STEAM lab at Cossett School, and we'll be supporting and working on that. So that's something that they have been raising funds for this year that hopefully will become a model kind of for what we're looking at within the district. Other types of unique needs that we have within the district, whether it's in special education, whether it's in opportunities for students to get more time to work independently on things that they are passionate about. We currently have a dual-language program that is offered at Congress Park School. Next year, it'll be in kindergarten, first, and second grade. Approximately two-thirds of our students at Congress Park School are, have elected to be a part of that program over there, so we're excited about the opportunities that are happening there.
Yeah, so I mean, Kyle touched on a couple of these. You know, over the past, you know, five years now, you know, we've changed curriculums in reading and math. We've also not only introduced a dual-language immersion program at Congress Park, but we've really have immersion programs in our higher grades at all of our schools, right? So that we have a very clear focus on foreign language. You know, but as we, you know, as we are good members of the community and, you know, we want to do our part, you know, the next part of this, on the right hand of the slide, you know, is something that, you know, I think inherently is something that, you know, possibly LaGrange can help us with, and that's, you know, as a school district in Cook County, we're producing, we actually participate by school code in the Township Treasurer's Office. So I'm not sure of everybody who's familiar with that, but they're right over on calendar, if I'm not mistaken. So they actually manage all of the money for our district and all the feeder districts in the LT. And it is something inherently unique to Cook County. In fact, they don't exist outside of Cook County. The interesting thing about that is the management of our money is something that, or at least the paying of our bills is something that we do every day. We have the software and the staff to do it. You know, we have a business officer and a business team that takes care of those transactions. And recently, with the help of the League of Women Voters, we had a forum at Barnesdale School in which we talked about the TTO. In fact, that panel included members from the League of Women Voters, myself, Dave Herndon from District 105, and then two of the members from the TTO, along with Leader Durkin. We had an opportunity, you know, to explore, you know, one thing that we want is that an ability of our school board through regular voting to determine whether or not we want to be part of the Township Treasurer's Office or not. That takes a lot to do, but I think, you know, working in a community like LaGrange and LaGrange Park and Brookfield with, you know, with people like yourselves, you know, maybe this offers us the opportunity to work together to figure out ways in which we can do that. We spend $175,000 a year as a fee to the TTO, and that number will increase as the fund balance goes up. So that number will keep going up because we're increasing the fund balance. But I don't want you to think about it as $175,000 a year. I want you to think of it as three teachers or a couple of reading interventionists or social workers that, you know, could go into our schools, that could help our children each and every day. And, you know, I think as time goes on and we have opportunities to get to know each other even better, is that, you know, we find maybe even ways like this to work together to allow our school board to be able to have a vote to determine, you know, our fate with the Township Treasurer's Office. We've also explored other ideas of savings, which we'll continue to do, whether that's changing co-ops for, you know, insurance, you know, or even other operational expenses like looking at solar panels, you know, within the schools or on top of the schools that we have now to be able to take, you know, to offer savings on energy. You know, so, you know, I think if I leave you with one thing, even though I know I've focused a little bit maybe on the money at the end of this, you know, is that it is important, right, that we have a sound foundation or a financial foundation so that all of these children have the opportunity to learn the best, right? Which is what we believe we're delivering.
So that kind of wraps up our conversation. I'd like to thank you for allowing us to talk to you tonight. We hope to make this more of an annual event to give you a state of the union of the district. Again, our information can be found on our website, and then the information that we pulled on regarding our schools, that was general district information. We also have schoolbase@illinoisreportcard.com as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions or comments for our guests? Trustee Gail?
Kyle, Brian, thanks for coming and talking. Just one question. I saw on one of the slides, there's the difference between, I think, instructional spending and operations spending. Can you just explain what's the distinction between those two?
Yeah, so this is going to be instructional costs. Thank you, trustee Gail. So this would be the difference between instructional costs and then things related to, you know, electricity, heating, air conditioning, those type of things. So when you look at those two things, the way the state breaks them down, we break them down as well. You know, typically in instructional, you'll see cost per child, right? You know, and the operational costs are just that, you know? So, you know, what it takes to heat a building, if you will, and to roll that all up.
Where do teacher salaries fit into that? Which bucket are they?
Yeah, instructional.
They're instructional?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Gail. Trustee Koteenek.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thanks for your time. You had mentioned the Township Treasurer's Office, and I've always been intrigued by that in terms of what exactly it does. In terms of the services that they provide, it sounds like you replicate or are able to do what they're doing. So along those lines, are they providing services that other districts can't do on their own? And what is the benefit of having them? And then the second part of the question would be, you had talked about possibly moving away from their services. How is that, how would that be achieved?
Yeah, so trustee Koteenek, right? Thank you. So there's a couple of facets for that. So everything related to the operational, the paying of bills, the paying of, you know, checks, those type of things, we could absorb right now because we're doing those things right now. By code, we're not allowed to invest our own money. So that is a service that the Township Treasurer's Office is doing for us right now, is they pool together the rest of the feeder districts' money, and then they invest it into things that are highly regulated by the state. You know, these would be things like treasury bills, you know, low-risk instruments, those type of things. So we would have to find a solution for that, but we think we could do that via intergovernmental agreements with the other feeder districts, and they seem to be very interested in that. You know, as far as, and I think, hopefully I didn't miss any of the first part of that, but I think the second part for what it would take for us to...
Well, yeah, so let me back you up. Are there other districts that aren't in a position to utilize those services? They're not staffed for that, or they don't have the skill set, and this TTO brings that to them?
Yeah, since I had an opportunity to work with all of the board presidents within the feeder districts, the answer to that question would be no, that all of them felt at the time that we've been working together that they could absorb all of those things. Now, I will say, based on elections, there have been changes to boards, so some of the favorability that we may have had may have changed, but I think generally speaking, I could say the majority of the districts, you know, better part of 90%, would still agree with that statement. As far as what it would take for us to leave, you know, other than legislative action, which is the way that we've, you know, hoped to go, right? Again, with Leader Durkin, you know, being a supporter of this, and educating voters about exactly what this relationship is and how they exist, it takes a majority of the school board members on each one of those districts' boards to vote that they would like to exit. So you have to have a unanimous agreement through all of the feeder districts and a majority on those boards to agree to that. You know, and it may seem, you know, I don't know if that seems easy, but it hasn't been.
I was going to say, if you did a straw poll, where would you guys be?
We would lose probably one district.
Okay.
And that's enough. Yeah, that's enough to end it. But on top of that, even after that, that just gets it to an ability for voters to have it on a referendum, and then it requires the majority of voters within the district, within the TTO district, to be able to vote affirmative that, you know, allowing us to dissolve the TTO, if you will.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Koteenek. Other questions or comments? Well, again, gentlemen, thank you for taking the time. It really helps when we speak to our realtors and people that move to LaGrange. Our schools, be they religious-based or public, are a huge pillar of that, Metra, vibrant downtown. So you're a part of the pillar that we need to be in partnership with. We do get regular, I guess, newsletter from District 105 as well, and we work well with you all, so we really appreciate you taking the time out here. If you're... If you're looking for a good math teacher, Mary Klonowski, Lyons Township High School.
Yeah, we, we know Mary. We, and thank you for...
You have to prepare those students for teachers like Mary. And you've got David May, who is an alumni of your board, who will, who will be on a board with us this evening. So thank you for your time.
Well, President Livingston, I'll say, we're definitely walking away that you said that we were the number-one reason why people moved to LaGrange. So there's no worries about that.
Okay, well, you're on television, so now...
Thank you.
One of the reasons. But thank you. Yeah, appreciate that. Our next item is a resolution celebrating the 100th anniversary of Illinois being the first state to ratify the 19th Amendment. Just shortly before the meeting began, I put trustee Augustine on the spot and asked her, as our newest member and female member of this board proudly, to read this resolution in the record. So at this time, I would call upon trustee Augustine to read the resolution into the record.
Okay. Thank you, President Livingston, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for bringing this forward. A resolution celebrating the 100th anniversary of Illinois being the first state to ratify the 19th Amendment. Whereas Illinois had long been at the forefront of the movement to provide women the right to vote, and whereas in Illinois, the First Women's Suffrage Association was established in Earleville in LaSalle County in 1855, just seven years after the first Women's Rights Convention in Seneca Falls, New York, which called for suffrage for women. And whereas the first statewide suffrage organization, the Illinois Women's Suffrage Association, IWSA, was established in 1869, becoming the Illinois, the Illinois Equal Suffrage Association in 1891. And whereas, also in 1891, Illinois enacted a law allowing women the right to vote for elective school offices. And whereas in 1913, Illinois enacted the Presidential Suffrage Bill, which gave Illinois women the right to vote in federal and municipal elections, not otherwise restricted to men under the Illinois Constitution. And whereas, within, with the enactment of that law, Illinois became the first state east of the Mississippi River to give women such right to vote, and is credited with being a major positive influence in advancing women's suffrage movements in the United States. And whereas on June 4, 1919, the proposed 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution was passed by the United States Congress and sent to the states for ratification. And whereas 100 years ago, on June 10, 1919, Illinois became the first state to ratify the 19th Amendment, one hour prior to Wisconsin. And whereas Illinois led the way for the necessary three-fourths of the states to ratify the 19th Amendment, which became part of the Constitution on August 26, 1920. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the President of the Board of Trustees of the Village of LaGrange, Cook County, and State of Illinois, that the Village of LaGrange declares June 10, 2019, a day to celebrate women's rights to vote and the important role Illinois played in achieving that right in the United States.
Thank you, trustee Augustine. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comment on the resolution? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He opposed. The resolution is passed, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, June 10, and ahead of Wisconsin, no less. That's even better. So thank you, and thank you for all you do all year in LaGrange. Appreciate it. Our next point of business is appointments and reappointments to our advisory boards and commissions. Mr. Clerk, I might add, ask you to read the names of appointees into the record.
Certainly. Would you like to read? Yes, just a gentleman. For the Community and Economic Development Commission, Beverly Hayes and Maurice McGee. For the Design Review Commission, Tim Reardon. For the Environmental Quality Commission, Rose Nasif, Mary Gertzmeier, Stan Zornoweki, Margaret Peterson, Bruce Whiteway, and Brandon Simic, and David May. Plan Commission, Greg Pace, Jeff Hoffenberg, Suzanne Mosher.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Would seek a motion to approve the fellow LaGrange residents in these boards and commissions.
I'll make the motion to approve the appointments as presented.
Thank you, trustee Koteenek. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gale. Appreciate it. For those of you who are here tonight that are coming on the board, will you please stand up? And let's get a microphone over to them so they can introduce themselves, maybe tell a brief about it. So, microphone there, charity or somebody? How long you've lived in the village, basic background, and a name would help.
I'm Dave May. I've lived in the village for 35 years, I think, and I've been appointed to the Environmental Quality Commission. So I'm looking forward to helping the village continue its really leadership role in, in providing environmental improvements for the next several years.
Hi, my name is Bruce Whiteway. I've lived here 36 years, looking forward to working with the Environmental Quality Commission and just serving the village. I've gotten a lot from the village in the last several years and ready to put some back. Thanks.
Thanks to you both and all your colleagues. I see some fellow board members around you, especially the EQC has been very active, and we appreciate the time. It's a very important topic, and we need the advice, and so that's what we ask for. I see your chairman there, Rose. Thank you as well. All right, with that, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor for these appointments, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The appointments are approved. We have some business to conduct as it relates to board governance. These are trustee assignments, and I am pleased to make the following trustee assignments for the coming year. What this amounts to are responsibilities for board presentations when a matter is being discussed in our regular scheduled meetings, as well as liaison assignments as our boards and commissions meet. They are oftentimes trustees that connect with those boards and commissions and liaison with staff back to the larger village board. They are economic development, trustee Koteenek and Kukler; finance, trustee Augustine; planning and zoning, trustee Gale; public safety, trustee McCarty; public works, trustee Holder. And for the liaison assignments for the Community Economic Development Commission, trustees Koteenek and Kukler; design review commission, trustee Gale; environmental quality commission, trustee McCarty; plan commission, trustee Holder; zoning board of appeals, trustee Augustine. And these assignments will become effective at the conclusion of this evening's village board, and I really want to thank the members of the village board. We see what we hear, we see what we see here tonight, but we all know that beyond the rostrum here, there's many assignments that you have, many emails that you get in consideration of things by your fellow citizens. So thank you for these assignments in the coming year. The next item are appointments to the LaGrange Liquor Commission, and I am herewith submitting for your consent the reappointments of trustee Mike Koteenek and trustee Mark Kukler to serve on the liquor commission. Both have agreed and indicated their willingness to serve, and so I would seek a motion to approve the appointments to the LaGrange Liquor Commission.
I'd like to move to have trustee Mike Koteenek and trustee Mark Kukler appointed to the LaGrange Liquor Commission.
Thank you, trustee McCarty. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gale. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes, and thank you, trustees and commissioners. The next item is a discussion. We will not be taking a vote on this, but it relates to video gaming, and it's the last business before we go to trustee, or comments on the agenda this evening. This is really an outcropping of a discussion we had at our budget meeting in March, and the Community Economic Development Commission briefly touched this issue last year. And when this first came up, it was in 2009 as the Illinois Jobs Now, which was the Capitol bill at the time, passed. Villages had the opportunity to opt in or out of video poker, and at the time, LaGrange opted out. And the, I guess, parameters of the video poker are if you want to participate in video poker, you have to proactively opt in. Now, I will say, this is something the village board has largely taken a position of neutrality on, including myself, but we also want to ask questions and learn and understand because that's what we do as a competitive village. There's been now a decade of data and a body of work and experiences as it relates to video poker, and I'll briefly synthesize what I hear about the subject, and then maybe ask trustee Berkland to go over the provisions of what we're talking about. We'll also say that we're not scheduled for a vote anytime soon. It's not necessarily the next meeting or, but it's something we want to be responsive to in terms of business interests in the village and resident interests as well. The, the gist of it is, with video poker, some of our businesses, and I think there'd be about 18 that would qualify for video poker, have come to us and said with, with paid leave, with sick leave, with minimum wage, and other things that are perfectly fine, they've been passed. We've also lost some business at the same time to other communities, particularly during the daytime, that engage in video poker, the lunchtime crowd, let's say, or people that would frequent in video poker and then order food at the same time. On the other hand, we've heard a lot about what we don't like about video poker. We've heard about aesthetics, signage, slots here, flags, banners. We've heard from some people that when they walk into an establishment to have dinner, they don't want to be eight feet from somebody that's playing video poker. So there's, there's thoughts and arguments on both sides, and so what we've asked the village attorney to do is, in order to further this type of discussion, to write up what we would consider the most restrictive type of video poker ordinance that would be a starting point for our village consideration. And that would include how to advertise or not advertise, how to house video poker, and so on and so forth. So the, there are financial benefits to the village from video poker, but I wouldn't say that's a driver, just gauging from the village board. It's helpful. We would certainly find uses for the funds that would be dedicated either for economic development or whatever the board would deem relevant. But it's, it's like so many other things, a question we have to ask ourselves now that the decade has passed, and we've gotten some interest from businesses who at least want us to take a second look. And I'm happy to do that. So with that, Mr. Berkland, maybe if you could run through some provisions or highlights of what we would be talking about as a starting point on an ordinance, and we'll open it up for questions or comments.
Thank you, President Livingston. The, the place to start is the Illinois Video Gaming Act itself. As with many pieces of legislation, the, the act is intended to establish a particular thing, and in this case, video gaming. And the drafting of those kinds of acts often leaves a lot of questions in people's mind. They aren't as specific as they could be, and that's not different with the Illinois Video Gaming Act. What the act does say is that it's regulated tightly by the Illinois Gaming Commission, that video gaming is allowed only in a place that sells and serves alcoholic beverages, and with a couple of exceptions like truck stops and veterans, community, and similar types of, of clubs or communities like that. Well, you've stated exactly what the village staff and I have been trying to do, which is to put down on paper all the things that can be considered in order to govern them. One other point related to the act, the state act, is that non-video, the Video Gaming Act does not preempt home rule, and it also, however, does not impose non-home rule limitations with one exception, and that is that a non-home rule municipality like ours can only charge $25 a year for the license that we give for a video gaming terminal. Other municipalities that don't have that constraint, those being home rule, can, could charge thousands of dollars for that. So what we have done is, you have two pieces of paper in front of you. One of them is sort of an overlay of the key elements of the act itself and the kind of parameters that a municipality can engage in. Before we talk specifics about that and take your questions, I will point out that most municipalities, and certainly LaGrange, have sort of three different areas in which they can govern this kind of activity. The first is general police powers. Every municipality, whether home rule or non-home rule, has just sort of general police powers to protect the public safety and health and to make sure that the villages is working well. So that, and that applies in a lot of different things, like nuisances and the kinds of things that you see in our code of ordinances. The second is the Video Gaming Act itself has certain standards that, and we'll get to those. And the third is that one of the most powerful areas of, of a non-home rule municipality's ability to govern is with the Illinois Liquor Control Act. There are very few fetters on how a municipality can determine what kinds of liquor licenses it's willing to issue, and all sorts of restrictions or privileges that relate to that. And so that is the, another way that, that a municipality can govern. And then, so those three, the police powers, the state act, and the Liquor Control Act all blend together in what we've written for your consideration tonight. So on the state side, there is a limitation that no gaming place, whether it's a restaurant or other establishment, a bar, someplace that serves alcoholic beverages, can have more than three video gaming terminals. So that's fixed by the state. That, those...
Mark, did you say three?
Or five? Did I say three? I'm so sorry. It's five. And those five terminals have to be in a place that's restricted from entry by anyone under the age of 21 years. And, and there are licenses that have to be displayed, and there are security measures that have to be in place. If you turn to the overview of key elements, you'll see that we have listed things that relate to whether, in, whether there should be certain licenses only under the liquor code to which video gaming would apply, or whether it would be broader, and that's one of the discussions that you'll have tonight. Another is, we've pointed out the potential revenue that could be generated if there was video gaming in how many restaurants or, or, and how many video gaming terminals would be allowed. In the... In the drafts that we've made of regulations, we've included a variety of things, such as having a security monitoring system, whether the village should have a direct alarm system for in case of burglary. We've created very strict signage restrictions that would include no depictions or words that relate to video gaming, either outside of an establishment or inside the establishment that you could see through the windows. And then all of the sort of basic things that naturally would go in our municipality, such as people who are intoxicated would not be allowed to engage in video gaming. And there would be penalties and potential suspensions or revocations of video gaming terminal licenses if a 21, under 21-year-old person undertook to video gaming against the law. These are very restrictive. And in addition to them, the question arose and was much discussed among the village staff as to how many there should be and whether there should be spacing standards so that they wouldn't be all in one place or be next door to each other and, in essence, fighting for people to be in one place instead of another. I think --
That's great. That's a helpful run through.
For now, answer all the questions that you may have.
Why don't we open it up for questions? And if there's anybody here tonight that wants to speak to it, we'll handle that at this point in the agenda after any trustee questions or comments. But again, Mark, thank you for generating a draft ordinance. That's no small effort with the staff and charity. And that really does help us know what we're reacting to or potentially. And most importantly, lets the public know what's under consideration if we were to consider this as a formal option ordinance. So with that, I'll open it up for questions at this point for Mark or me or anybody from the Board of Trustees or comments. Trustee Koteenek.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. So I'll start with counsel first. Can you give a little background, excuse me, in terms of when these ordinance go live statewide? Or is that the plan from the state, the directive? And then, is it an opt-in or opt-out program? Or how does that work?
Well, the Video Gaming Act is in place, and there are many places that have video gaming terminals. And so if the village chose to authorize video gaming, it would occur at any point in time the village determines after an ordinance establishes video gaming. The new act that we've learned about, most recently about sports betting, is a ways out and is unrelated to what we're working on.
Okay. That answers my question then. I guess for Mr. President and staff, as we do go through a detailed discussion of this and a potential vote at some point, you know, some questions I would have and like vetted, and a couple of them you already covered, counsel, just enforcement, how that would be handled, you know, what's participation with our surrounding towns, you know, what are we going against in terms of the countryside, the Brookfields, and so forth? I'd be curious, I know we had some numbers previously on the financial breakout. I'd like to better understand, you know, what's, how is that pie cut between the establishment, the state, the village, et cetera? Who else has their hands in this revenue? And then just the governance of that money as well. So, you know, in short, enforcement, how are we benchmarking against our peer villages? And then the financial breakout? And I think that would be a good start to the conversation from my end.
Thank you, trustee Koteenek. Putting it on the spot, charity, is there any part of that you could just fill us in on a higher level? Who's, what municipality around us uses video gaming?
Sure. Certainly. Countryside and Brookfield both allow for video gaming and have several establishments with video game terminals. Western Springs and LaGrange Park, last time I checked, do not allow video gaming.
And I think at one point during the budget meeting in March, we had some financials. So trustee Koteenek, we will distribute those and certainly make that part of our discussion. Yeah. I can't remember exactly.
I can briefly touch on a couple of those. We estimated that if the village were to adopt an ordinance allowing video gaming and were to restrict that to establishments only with an A2 liquor license, with a full-service bar, based on the averages, statewide averages and averages that we've seen from our surrounding communities that do allow video gaming, the village revenue would be estimated between $100,000 and $200,000 annually. And each licensed establishment may realize $60,000 to $90,000 in revenue annually from video gaming.
I would build on that and your, part of your question, trustee Koteenek. The state has a license fee, and the state keeps all of the revenue generated by the license fee. But then also, the state imposes a 30% tax on the terminals, and the state keeps 5/6ths of that money. The remaining 1/6th of that fund, of that money, goes into what's called the local government video gaming distributive fund, and in theory, gets distributed to the municipalities that host these machines.
If I could just ask, charity, for the estimate of $100,000 to $200,000, how many restaurants would you be expecting to have a license?
That's based on an estimate of 15 establishments.
Thank you.
Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Livingston. How do you or charity, Mark, Mr. Berkland, how do we see the village moving to the next steps on this before the board may or may not take up a vote? Do we see there being village discussion? Do we see ourselves doing some more studies on this? How are we going to get to that next step where we feel it's to the point where we should vote? And how much information have we gathered at that point?
Well, I think we, this is really the first time we've publicly discussed the matter. We did discuss it at our budget workshop, which was technically public, but those tend to be not widely attended. So I think this is an opportunity to gather our initial thoughts. We've had a couple of passes at it. And then we would want to give the community advance notice to, in short, have it out. I mean, look at it, discuss it in full view here. It might be something we go back with refined numbers to the CEDC, because when we last discussed that, I don't think we had the research that had been done, or certainly we didn't have a sample ordinance. So I think it would be both those kind of things that gives people an opportunity to weigh in with enough time in advance and transparency. I think. Other questions or comments? Trustee Gale.
Yeah, I just wanted to dovetail off of that, President Livingston, about the CEDC, perhaps having them, you know, look at it and have some discussions related to this. I think I'd benefit from their, any feedback we'd receive. And, you know, one of my notes here was just, you know, fit for the village. I get the financial and revenue things, but, you know, the feedback I generally get from folks, I don't even get to, oh, you know, it might be 100 or 200. Like, no. Like, I don't like it.
Yeah.
You know, it's a flat rejection by some folks of the concept. So it'd be, it'd be good to hear some feedback on that. But then I did have some specific questions too. And I don't know whether we have answers tonight or would add this to the hopper as well, was, you know, the financial trade-offs of the revenue that can be generated, and maybe, Mark, you can maybe speak to this, versus the regulatory costs. Because if we put in place this strict, you know, this stricter ordinance, we're going to have to double-check that, you know, folks are actually following that. Is there, you know, do we end up losing, you know, do we end up, you know, all the revenue that's generated ends up getting gobbled up in the, you know, the regulatory requirements to make sure there's compliance with it? If there's even any numbers like that out there.
My answer might surprise you a little bit. I think that in terms of administration and regulatory oversight is probably relatively minimal, because all of this is governed very strictly and electronically through the state. The state will know very quickly if there's something amiss with the operations. The village will know what's going on in an establishment that has a liquor license in the same manner then as it does now. So there will be administrative undertakings, but I don't see it as being significant in terms of biting into potential revenue.
Okay, great. And then how is the, how is the revenue actually, how is it generated? Is this like credit card transactions? Are people paying with cash? Like, how does, how does it work?
Charity, can you respond?
Sure. So the actual video game terminal, if that's what you're asking about.
Yes, right.
The person puts in cash.
Okay.
They receive when they're done playing and decide to cash out if they have money coming back to them. They receive a little, kind of like a print receipt.
Print receipt.
And then they go to a machine that's very much like an ATM, scan that, and it distributes cash.
Okay, cash. So then I guess, sorry, Chief Bluder, I have a question for you then. In your experiences, or perhaps in the village's experience, any, is there any, you know, if this is a sort of a cash-related transaction, are there any, you know, any law enforcement issues that arise? You know, now that you've got more cash in an establishment, is there, you know, greater incidence of someone coming in and trying to, you know, pry that machine open and, you know, access the cash?
It's always a concern. In talking to some neighboring chiefs who do have video gaming, they have not seen an uptick in criminal activity. So, but yes, that's always a concern.
Okay. That was what I was wondering. Yeah, that's it. That's.
Good. Thank you, trustee Gale. And again, these are all helpful questions. I think when we first speak to people, and we certainly had this experience at the CEDC, the first answer is, gee, I really don't think that's a fit, no. But then, when you talk about the different dimensions of the business needs, the competitiveness, and what it would take, you might get to a yes if. That's probably where I'm at, a yes if. And the big if is really the aesthetics. I just, the banners and the flyers and the signage is not a fit, I don't personally believe, for LaGrange. But I do believe that giving our businesses an opportunity to compete is certainly worthy of the discussion. And so I'm open-minded to it, as long as we're transparent and open about the discussion. So I think it could be fine if we govern it properly. Other questions? Trustee McCarty.
Thank you, President Livingston. One of the things noted here is the idea of a delay in the ability to get the license of three years or so. And, charity, I know in a former life, you did some studies on the impact of video gaming on restaurant establishments in early phase and late phase. How does that impact it? And are we, if we don't allow it, are we giving a, is that a terrific handicap to new restaurants that come in?
Sure. So in, I think, President Livingston's remarks, opening remarks, he talked about, we, and maybe Mark Berkland talked a little bit about this too, about we kind of drafted an ordinance that was the most restrictive type of ordinance that we could envision, given what the state allows us to do. And so part of that was prohibiting what are called gaming cafes. And so those are establishments that basically exist just for the purposes of video gaming. They usually have a lady's name as their title, Dottie's or Betty's or Stella's. So part of that, we approached, it's sort of a belt and suspenders approach, a couple different regulations related to discouraging or prohibiting those video gaming cafes. And one way that many communities have been successful in doing that is requiring the establishments to be in business for a certain amount of time before they're eligible to apply for a video gaming license, because those gaming cafes would not be able to sustain themselves for that period of time before getting their video gaming licenses.
Okay, good. That's very helpful to know. Do we have any numbers? Or this is, probably goes in the pot of questions to ask. What are the typical bets that we're seeing? How much money does a typical person sit down and bet at a machine? You know, with trustee Gale, the visions of moneybags coming out and having to call an armored car. I'm guessing that's not the case. But it would be interesting to know if we're talking about $20 to $30 or $100 to $150 kind of thing. I think that would be helpful for me. And then I guess as more of a comment, I, as I look forward to this, I look at the process. We know, one thing we do know, we don't know a lot about the new video gaming or the new gaming law that was just passed, but we do know it's a massive expansion of gambling in Illinois. And not only in the number of places you can gamble, but in the ways you can gamble. And like we saw, certainly, sort of after prohibition, that people changed in their attitude towards alcohol and alcoholic establishments as it became more common. And I think now, a restaurant is almost required to have a liquor license, or they're not going to compete very effectively. And I don't know if we're to that point with gaming, that that becomes a component. But, and personally, I know I would prefer a restaurant that doesn't have it, but to me, the protections we put in it are probably okay. And that's my prerogative to go to a place that doesn't have it if that's the case. And I think it's a competitive issue, as you mentioned, and I think we're going to have to look at it pretty seriously. One extra question also. It seems like sometimes you see villages having referendum on this. Is that a requirement? Is there any requirement of a village referendum on it? Or is it simply the village board?
There's no requirement to implement it. There is a requirement after a certain period of time, which has already passed, that if you want to prohibit it, it has to go to referendum. An example of that is Forest Park, which you, the standards for a petition are very, very high. 25% of all eligible voters have to sign a petition, and Forest Park did do that. But in terms of establishing video gaming, there is not a public process.
Other questions? Oh, trustee Gale.
Thanks. Sorry. Sorry for a couple more. It's actually for charity, so whether you have the answers now or, you know, it's part of the process. What, do you have a sense for how many of the restaurants in LaGrange have expressed an interest in it? You know, I see from the other, you know, the other, our neighboring communities, and then from our estimates, I'm just wondering if, you know, what the demand is or the request. And then any sense, I didn't realize how much you studied it before, what kind of folks are actually the ones that are, you know, are using these machines? I've always thought, you know, at least broad strokes, you know, gambling tends to be, you know, it tends to be something that the people that can least afford it end up, you know, end up being the ones that are doing it. I just have a, you know, a concern about that. So, I don't know if you can speak to it now or?
We can certainly follow up with some more detailed information. I can tell you that from my experience in looking at these kinds of establishments, the video gaming cafes typically target women over a certain age. That is their target demographic, and they seem to be pretty successful with that.
All right, thanks.
Trustee Kukler.
A couple of things. A couple of things. I would historically consider myself very neutral on this issue. I see both the pros and cons, kind of like President Livingston, and not putting in words in a trustee McCarty's mouth, but I do see this evolving into a more accepted thing that's occurring. I just see it so much at so many restaurants. I go in now and don't even notice, you know, when they're there, it's of no issue. The 15 establishments for LaGrange seems high to me, and that countryside and Brookfield would have less. I'd be surprised if we had more than those two towns, but I could be wrong. Secondly, if we did do this, and depending on how the regulations were and what we could do, I would be supportive of it. I do think we could, you know, get significant revenue by, and it was suggested but not really detailed, we could have a liquor license that allows gaming for whatever establishments we want and have a very high annual price for that liquor license. My suggestion would be a $10,000 annual price for that liquor license. And then if we have five establishments, that's $50,000 a year. And then, if we have five establishments, that's $50,000 a year. If we had 15, obviously, it would be $150,000, just on the licensing aspect. When I'm going through, and I have thought about this, I'm sure all the trustees have, the, some of the proposed belts and suspenders, I don't know that they're really necessary. To me, the spacing between licensed establishments, which is on page four, under N2, I'm not too concerned if two businesses, you know, that have been established, LaGrange businesses that are next door to each other, each wanted it. I'd much rather allow them to have it than try to pick which one gets it. So, that's something I don't necessarily need. I can't find the rule about that you would need to be in business for three years. But, and I understand the age, but I'd be much more comfortable with a one-year. I don't want to be viewed like we're giving somebody a gigantic step up, or keeping people out that say, well, now I can't open my restaurant, because I need this. Every other restaurant in town's able to charge, you know, less for their food, because they're making this revenue, and I'm not. And with three years, I'll be out of business. So, I'd be more comfortable with a one-year on that. Again, under other considerations, number one, the village could consider an increase in fee. That would be my very large increase of $10,000. Under number two, I would consider fraternal organizations in LaGrange as being something. Most importantly to me, and I think following President Livingston's comments, are the strict signage, especially outside. I don't think it's becoming for the village to look like a, you know, I won't even say Las Vegas, more like, you know, New Jersey Boardwalk-type signs. I don't think that helps what we're going for with our brand imaging. So, I would want really strict signage on that. And again, as we hear, I do think it's very important that we're transparent. I don't believe any trustees talk to each other about this issue. I think we're just hearing it for the first time today, and really expressing our views for the first time today. And I know that we're open to hear from residents, open to hear from businesses, and their thoughts. But, at some point, I think we should get it back to the board and make a decision, as opposed to hanging out and, you know, not sure, people don't know which meeting to show up to to voice their opinions, or how to best voice their opinions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kukler. Other questions or comments? I would just have a couple of follow-up questions, and certainly agree with Trustee Kukler. At some point in the village, whether it's our budget, or video poker, or any other thing, we have to take the shot. We have to make the vote and have it out as a community in terms of discussion. Just a couple of questions. I tend to agree with Trustee Kukler on the idea of not, perhaps, doing a three-year runway to be able to have more parity across the board. But is there a way that a village, a non-home rule village like us, can just outright not allow, I'll call it a Dottie's or a Betty's, a self-standing?
Sure. So, in the draft ordinance, we address it two ways. One is to explicitly prohibit video gaming cafes, and another is to include the one-year, or the three-year, as we had it in the draft ordinance, minimum residency requirement, essentially.
Okay.
There are some other potential benefits to having a business be able to be established and meet our normal liquor licensing requirements for 60-40, food-to-alcohol service split before introducing video gaming as an additional supplemental revenue stream. So, I think that was also behind our thought process in the draft ordinance.
Okay. Anything else, Mark, or?
No, I would say that when the staff was discussing this, it was important that these be restaurants that have video gaming, rather than video gaming that supports the restaurant.
Thank you. Okay. We can take, and again, no penalty for or against, this is fine. This isn't necessarily the meeting to feel like you have to have your points out. We'll have that opportunity down the road. But if anybody wants to comment here at the meeting tonight, feel free to for the next few minutes. Otherwise, we'll move on our agenda. Okay? Oh, sure. Oh, that opportunity, you mean the suffrage? Yes. I will, there'll be a spot on the agenda. But, and that's coming very soon, by the way, not to belabor the point. So, why don't we talk about video poker, if there's a comment here quickly, and then we'll move on.
President, thank you. My name is Steve Palmer. I own Palmer Place Restaurant. I'm here with some other restaurateurs here tonight. I just want to talk about the history really quick of many years ago, when this first came up. It was a little over 10 years ago, and it was brought to my attention, asked of me personally, how do you feel about video gaming? What do you think we should, how should we vote? President Asperger, at the time, had, we had a meeting, I had a meeting with staff and other people, and the conclusion that the business community had was, let's let other communities make the mistakes first and do this right, because we feel that this is something that could be beneficial to LaGrange, and to our businesses. But at the same time, there's too many unknowns out there. It was just after machines were getting, illegal machines were getting taken out by the Cook County sheriffs, and all these other things going on, and nobody knew how gaming was going to be. So, at that time, the businesses said, we would prefer to wait and see that, and we were told that there would, at any time, the village board could enact an ordinance in the future. So, just to let you know, that was, the business community's position at that time was, we don't want to make the same mistakes. We don't want to make mistakes that might be a detriment to our community. So, that's why this period of time is waited, to see what other towns do. And that's why we are supportive of a lot of what was listed there. I don't know that Trustee Kukler and I are going to agree on pricing, but I'm sure that could get talked about. But, so, our position was, and still is, we don't want to do anything that would be to the detriment of our community. We love LaGrange. We love what we have here. We do think that this can be an asset in multiple ways, even this organization here. League of Women Voters comes and asks for donations, the Little League comes and wants to sponsor Little League, and all these things used to be a lot easier to do. You know, money is tighter in today's day and age than it was before. Reinvestment in your business, and reinvestment into, you know, if you see a lot of the businesses that do have this, they're reinvesting back in their business with that money. So, I think the money that gets spent here, and the additional money besides tax money that comes back to the community, will also help continue to keep downtown LaGrange thriving. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else on this topic this evening? Again, more to come. Appreciate trustees, your questions, comments. Certainly, the village team, Mark and Charity and Andre, for your thoughts. And we will proceed with care, caution, and transparency on this, and have, will be decisive at the same time. So, it'll get a hearing. With that, why don't we, before we read all these business items into the agenda, Lori, why don't we, why don't we ask for comments at this point, then? That makes sense. So, go ahead if you wish, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm Lori Brown. I live at 115 South Sixth Avenue in LaGrange. And I am current co-president of the League of Women Voters of the LaGrange area. And these are fellow league members here, Mary Klenowski and Siobhan Green, who you probably know. I have been co-president for all of two weeks. So, really, I get the fun part here of celebrating while Mary has been co-president for four years up until then. So, wonderful person to follow. So, I just want to thank you for reading that resolution and adopting it. It's certainly very important to all of us. And I thought I'd give you a little history of, I know we have historians here who might appreciate it. The LaGrange League, at the time, was not an area league. The LaGrange League was founded in 1924, four years after women got the right to vote. And I was looking back at the records, and all the presidents were listed under their husbands' names. Mrs. James Kidston was the first president. I don't believe I even know her first name. It took until the 1980s until we had our own names, so progress has been made. So, thank you again. I think we all agree that communities are better if everyone has a right to use their talents. And I'm so pleased to see the capable, competent women sitting up here. And so, we're looking to the future, so that our girls and women can achieve even more. And then, we'll be celebrating next year as well, when the actual amendment went through. So, you'll probably be seeing us again. And one last thing, because the league can't help being serious. You heard 102 say that we've worked with them on the Township School Treasurer's Office. We have a lot of information on that. We have done extensive studying. We have a lot of data collection. We'd be very happy to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got two little ones here who've been just troopers. We were wondering, could we have a quick picture with the proclamation?
Yes. Please come up, and please let us know your names, or their names. Come on right up here. And Mary, can you bring that sign up, so we know, League of Women Voters, so we?
And by the way, we don't always dress like this. The suffragists wore white, and they carried yellow roses.
Are we supposed to stand, or what do they want?
Why don't, why don't you come right back here, and trustees will stand. Yeah. Do we have a copy? It's, we've got like 10 copies.
What's it signed? We can give you, do you want a signed version? Or you just want?
We don't have a. We do. Oh, well. There we go.
It's not signed yet, but.
Sure. Mr. Clerk, will you sign this?
Certainly.
Clerk? All right, we'll look forward. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And you're welcome to stay for cake as well, to the young people, not to spoil their bedtime, but. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda items?
Certainly. Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote, because they have already been considered fully by the board at a previous meeting, or have been determined to be of routine nature. Any member of the board of trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. There are several items. Item A, ordinance plat of re-subdivision for 117 and 125 South Seventh. Scott Sanders Brightleaf Homes LLC. Item B, ordinance, amendment of Chapter 115 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding the Sale, Use, and Possession of Tobacco and Alternative Nicotine Products. Item C, award of contract. One, construction of fiscal year 2019-20, neighborhood street resurfacing project. Two, construction engineering services agreement. Three, preliminary construction engineering services agreement for motor fuel tax funds. Four, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code. Item D, award of contract, 2019 lane marking program. Item E, engineering services agreement, 2019 sewer televising program. Item F, professional services agreement, Hitchcock Design Group. Central Business District Streetscape Improvements Schematic Design Proposal. Item G, minutes of the Village of LaGrange Board of Trustees' regular meeting, Monday, May 13, 2019. Item H, consolidated voucher, 190527. Item I, consolidated voucher, 190610.
And under current business?
Under current business, we have three items. Item A, ordinance, variation, maximum building coverage, Catherine and Scott Ludso, 229 South Ashland Avenue. Item B, award of contract, advanced school crossing sign, flasher installation along Ogden Avenue. And item C, special event, 45th Annual Downtown LaGrange Craft Fair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Item four on our agenda are public comments regarding matters that are on our agenda this evening. None. Item five, consideration of the consent agenda and vote. Is there a motion?
To accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Trustee Koutinek. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale.
May I make?
Trustee Augustine, for recognition.
Thank you, President Livingston. In consideration of my relationship with the village prosecutor, I would like to recuse myself from each item on the voucher related to the village prosecutor.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Duly noted. Is there any comment on the motion for the consent agenda? Trustee Gale.
I had a quick question for Ryan about the item C, the contract award. Just remind me, there's a couple of things in here. There's this agreement for the motor fuel tax funds. What's that? I couldn't quite tell from the packet what we were voting on.
Sure. So, one of the requirements is that the village receives a certain amount each year, based on population, we get in terms of motor fuel tax. The state regulates our use of that to make sure that we're using it for roadway purposes. And so, as part of that, one of our requirements is that we have to pass a resolution specifically for how we're using those funds. And at the end of the project, we give them a final balancing statement of what we actually used.
And then, that's each project, we have to do that?
That's correct. So, the Village of LaGrange uses its MFT funds for capital projects.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. Other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Trustee McCarty.
Aye.
Trustee Kukler.
Aye.
Trustee Holder, I'm sorry. Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Koutinek.
Aye.
And with that, the motion passes. Item six on our agenda is the consideration of current business. Item A, ordinance, variation, maximum building coverage, Catherine and Scott Ludso, 229 South Ashland Avenue. Mr. Clerk, will you read this into the record, please?
Certainly.
I just sprung that on you, Mr. Clerk. You're welcome. This is... The scintillating television.
Thank you, President Livingston.
You're welcome. Trustee Holder.
Ordinance variation, maximum building coverage, Catherine and Scott Ludso, 229 South Ashland Avenue. The petitioners, Catherine and Scott Ludso, owners of the subject property at 229 South Ashland Avenue, wished to construct in addition to the rear of their home. The construction as proposed would cause the building coverage on the property to exceed the maximum allowed building coverage of 30%, as provided in paragraph 3-110E1 of the LaGrange zoning code. The exceedance would be 193.33 square feet, which is 3.12% over the limit. On May 16, 2019, the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on this matter. The Zoning Board of Appeals found the requested variation would allow the renovation of a historic house that strict adherence to the zoning code would deprive the petitioners of substantial rights commonly enjoyed by others. Staff and the village attorney have prepared the attached ordinance that would authorize the variation. If the village board concurs with the recommendation of the Zoning Board of Appeals, then a motion to approve the ordinance would be appropriate. There are several attachments. One, Zoning Board of Appeals findings of fact. Two, an ordinance granting a zoning variation regarding maximum building coverage at 229 South Ashland Avenue. Three, Zoning Board of Appeals, May 16, 2019 meeting staff memo. And four, Zoning Board of Appeals, May 16, 2019 draft meeting minutes excerpt.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Questions?
Need a motion.
Need a motion? Thank you on the ordinance. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move for the approval of the ordinance for the variation of the maximum building coverage of Catherine &amp; Scott Ludso at 229 South Ashland Avenue.
Thank you, Trustee McCarty. Thank you, Trustee Koteenek. It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments on the motion, the ordinance? Trustee McCarty.
Thank you, President Livingston. Got a couple of questions. Charity, I see that this was brought before the Plan Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals and the vote was four to zero. Were there only four members at the meeting that day?
Correct.
And in that condition, then every member had to vote affirmative for this to pass?
Correct.
I also see that the applicant was granted a variance back in August of 2017. Can you give me some more background on that?
Sure. That was related to a historic garage structure on the property and the variation was to allow for that structure to continue to exceed the maximum allowable height. The renovation of the historic garage actually reduced the overall footprint of accessory structure on the property and lowered the building coverage from what it previously had been to what it is today. So, I do believe that that was a factor that the Zoning Board of Appeals considered in their deliberation.
It lowered the number, but it was still, it still exceeds.
Correct.
Even there. And at that time, was it made clear to the applicant that they were over the applicable?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. I'll reserve comments.
Trustee McCarty. Other questions or comments?
Let me get some comments then.
McCarty?
Thank you. Thank you. As we consider this, once again, I'm placed in the position of trying to defend the Village of LaGrange and our zoning ordinance. And I find that every finding of fact in this report is incorrect and inconsistent with the actual facts of the case. The background is they were clearly, made clear that they were over the allotted area two years ago and that they knew that they were, that that was a condition and proceeded anyway to have this defined, this appeals done. With respect to the unique physical condition, this is a standard 50 by 150 lot. There are hundreds of them in LaGrange. There's nothing remotely unique to it. It is 100% self-created. They had the opportunity back in 2017, if a kitchen, a larger kitchen was an important part of their house, they could have reduced their garage even further. The garage is, we have determined the garage is a right and that's why it can be built there, but it is not a right to have that garage necessarily give you an extra 250 square feet. They are not denied any substantial rights. It is a kitchen and they have a kitchen currently. And it is absolutely a special privilege to allow them to have a better kitchen to the extent of almost 200 square feet. That's a very large next bedroom. I've found throughout the past, we've denied these because of just that. That's a substantial bonus we'd be providing to their house. Imagine if they were able to build a second, another bedroom in that house. We would never consider that, that they could, to do that. And I think it's wrong to consider this. I'm clearly going to vote against this.
Thank you, Trustee McCarty. Other questions on the ordinance?
Seeing none.
Oh, Trustee Kukler.
I am persuaded by Trustee McCarty. However, in weighing that, since it was unanimous at the Board level, I'm going to vote in favor of it. But again, we're sending direction to the Board that they really need to look at these. I know these are hard decisions to tell a neighbor not to, that they can't build the addition that they want to build. But that's, you know, the function of the Board is to really scrutinize these matters and look closely. But again, since it was a unanimous vote, I'm going to vote in favor.
Quick follow-up.
Thank you, Trustee Kukler.
Quick follow-up on it. One of the reasons I pointed out the four to no, that there's only four people in attendance is there's a tremendous amount of peer pressure when you're in that situation. One person on that Board would be the one that would deny it. And that's almost an unpleasant, it's a very unpleasant burden for that person, but I think it's an unfair burden to put on those Boards, too.
Right. And I guess we just have to encourage all members to appear at the meetings.
All right. Other questions? Trustee Augustine.
Just a comment. You know, first full Board meeting tonight, but I've gone to a lot of these meetings. I've attended some planning meetings and some zoning meetings. I'd like to see how we can line up better so that situations like this don't get to this point. You know, I don't know how that's all going to happen, but I know that we're smart and we'll work on that. I've read through the packet on this particular proposal. I don't disagree with Trustee McCarty or Trustee Kukler in any specific way. I am concerned with our consistency from our Commissions to our Boards, and I've seen a lot of this kind of thing happen and it's disconcerting for me. I'm not quite sure how I feel about this, but I do feel like they've made the necessary effort. It is a small increment. It is not a hardship, but it does make the, brings these houses up to date. So, while I would like to start to stick to code and find some more consistency, I do see that we have been inconsistent and just hoping to see, see us line up, maybe get some more education between the two, between all those Boards so that we can avoid this kind of event.
Duly noted. And we'll certainly, with staff and the Zoning Board, so we still have more appointments coming there. Trustee Gale.
Thanks, President Livingston. I just wanted to add, I agree about the need for consistency. One of the reasons I'm in favor of this is, I mean, this is de minimis. They're going from 32.81% to 33.12%. I mean, I, something this small strikes me as something that we can easily vote in favor for and is a practical, you know, line that we can draw when it's just a minor improvement to an existing, existing structure. That was all I wanted to add. So, I'm in favor of it for that, for that reason.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Koteenek.
Aye.
Trustee Kukler.
Aye.
Trustee McCarty.
Aye.
With that, the ordinance passes. Item B, award of contract, advanced school crossing sign flasher installation along Ogden Avenue, referred to Trustee Gale.
Thank you, President Livingston. My turn to find the page. So, award of contract for the advanced school crossing sign slash flasher installation along Ogden Avenue. In 2010, the Village requested that a permanent 20 mile an hour school speed zone be implemented along Ogden between Park and Spring due to the multiple schools within this corridor. IDOT denied the request, stating that the stretch of Ogden Avenue does not meet their standards for a school speed zone. As a next step, the Village sought approval from IDOT for the installation of a flashing yellow beacon mounted above the advanced school crossing signs on Ogden Avenue at Dover and Ashland Avenues. These flashing signs would be activated during school hours to alert motorists of the school zone, similar to the school zone flashers installed on Willispringe Road adjacent to the LTHS soccer campus. Funding for the initiative was also identified for the project as a result of a grant provided by State Representative Jim Durkin. In November 2018, a task order engineering agreement was executed with KLOA to complete the plans and specifications for this project. The plans and specifications were subsequently approved by IDOT in March of 2019. The scope of work consists of the installation of solar powered flashing beacons on the advanced school crossing signs on Ogden Avenue at Dover and Ashland. In order to obtain comprehensive pricing for the installation of the advanced school crossing signs, staff requested quotes from qualified electrical contractors. Total of eight firms received their request for proposal. A total of two proposals were received. One was from Lyons Electric Company for $27,325, a second from Hometown Electric Incorporated for $31,765. The low quote was submitted by Lyons Electric Company in that amount of $27,325, and that is below the budgeted amount of $36,000. A summary of the anticipated expenses and revenue sources are detailed in our Board's agenda. As noted in the table in our agenda, the cost of this project is funded by a grant facilitated through the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Development. In summary, staff has recommended that the Village Board waive the formal bidding process and authorize staff to enter into a contract with Lyons Electric Company for the installation of flashing yellow beacons mounted above advanced school crossing signs on Ogden Avenue at Dover Avenue and Ashland Avenue in the amount of $27,325. The final amount of the contract will be based on the actual work performed by the contractor at the unit prices listed in the contract. If approved, the work is anticipated to be completed by September of 2019. So, with that, I'll move for a vote to authorize staff to enter into a contract with Lyons Electric for the yellow beacon signs.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. Thank you, Trustee Koteenek. It's been moved and seconded. Questions on the motion or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Trustee McCarty.
Aye.
Trustee Kukler.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Koteenek.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Item C, special event, 45th Annual Downtown LaGrange Craft Fair, referred to Trustee Koteenek.
Mr. President, so I'd like to present the special event, the LaGrange Art and Craft Fair. The LaGrange Business Association is planning a request to hold the 45th Annual LaGrange Art and Craft Fair on Friday, July 12 through Sunday, July 13, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each day. The craft fair will include 200 exhibitors and generally has brought out thousands of visitors to LaGrange each and every year and has been ranked one of the top 100 best arts and craft shows in the country. The location of the art fair will be located on the east and west side of LaGrange Road, Harris Avenue, Village Parking Lots 3 and 4, and Madison Avenue. And in the past, the LGBA has hired and contracted with Craft Productions to organize or to be the lead event organizer. Given the ongoing construction that our Village Manager mentioned on LaGrange Road and the impact of Village Parking Lot Number 8, the LGBA has also secured additional parking off-site at LT's North Campus, and this will provide a shuttle service between the event and the high school parking lot. As also in the past years, Cosette Elementary School property will be available for additional customer parking. Village staff has reviewed this request and recommends the approval of the event, subject to the following conditions which I'll list. Number one, first that all licenses, permits, and insurance coverage be obtained to the satisfaction of the Village. Second, that the Village maintains final approval of site security, parking, and utility plans. Third, that a whole, hold harmless agreement be signed by Craft Productions and the LGBA. Fourth, that Craft Productions, Inc. shall ensure that all vendors sign a participant acknowledged release and waiver. Fifth, all affected businesses and agent care connections shall be notified in writing of the proposed street closures no less than two weeks prior to the event. Sixth, portable toilets are to be delivered Thursday morning by 8:00 a.m. The portable toilets, dumpsters, et cetera, are to be removed before the start of business, 8:00 a.m. Monday, July 17. Seventh, all costs incurred by the Village for materials and labor are to be reimbursed by Craft Productions. Number eight, vendors are to be notified that no displays of merchandise are to be placed in Village Planters. And lastly, number nine, vendors must park in off-site locations as detailed in the Craft Fair Productions, their letter of agreement. If my fellow trustees agree with these requests, the Village Board will formally need to close the following roads. Harris Avenue from LaGrange Road to Ashland. Madison Avenue from Harris to just north of Madison Avenue entrance to parking lot number eight. And lastly, Village Parking Lots Number 3 and 4. I see Nancy, who does the heavy lifting on these events, is here. If you'd like to make any comments on anything I might have missed to promote the fair?
They existed. All.
Great, thank you. I stand corrected on that. So, if there's no other comments or questions for Nancy, I would like to make a motion then to propose the LGBA's request to hold the LaGrange Art and Craft Fair, July 12 through the 14th, subject to the restrictions and conditions as mentioned.
Thank you, Trustee Koteenek. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Trustee Kukler.
Aye.
Trustee McCarty.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Koteenek.
Aye.
With that, the motion passes. Great luck on the event, Nancy, and thanks for all you do, truly. Item seven, public comments regarding matters that are not on our agenda this evening. Welcome.
My name is Jeff Kajalda. Some of you may remember me, a couple of years ago, I tried to get hens legal in LaGrange. Couple different faces here. I'm back to fight for that cause again. Since then, Western Springs, Brookfield, Countryside, all have legalized hens and LaGrange Park is actually considering it. They've got a public opinion poll. I won't go over the whole spiel now because it's really late, but I would like the Board to consider changing the ordinance again.
Very good. Thank you. Is there an ordinance? Well, I guess we'll, we'll see what a sample ordinance is. Appreciate that. Would you want video poker with the hen house?
No, that's okay.
All right. Thought I would ask. Okay, thank you. We'll take that under advisement, understand the topic, so remember it from last time and we'll keep an open mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on items not on our agenda this evening? Item eight, trustee comments. Trustee comments this evening. Trustee Kukler.
Just real briefly, Ryan, thank you for making it sunny on a pep parade and for all the Departments, all their help. It was another successful pep parade, so thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Kukler. Trustee McCarty.
One, I want to thank all the people that were appointed to Boards and Commissions. Despite my sometimes dissatisfaction, I really appreciate what everybody does. I know it's not easy to sit on those Boards. We do appreciate what the people do. And the Environmental Quality Commission will be having a Board meeting here on Thursday and we will be looking at the economics and the practicality of recycling and how we can optimize our recycling. And just a general question and answer session for residents if they're interested in finding more out about our refuse hauling and recycling contract. Join us here at 7 o'clock on Thursday.
Great. Thank you, Trustee McCarty. Other trustee comments this evening? Again, welcome, Trustee Augustine, to your first Board meeting. Wonderful. And thank you, Clerk Burns, for your historical tour on June 5, 4.
9.
9. Or you had one on June 4 on transportation, that's right. All right. With that, we have no other trustee comments. We don't have any matters for closed session this evening. Item 10, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned until June 24 at 7:30. Thank you. Cut the cake. Again, welcome, Trustee Augustine, to your first Board meeting. Wonderful. And thank you, Clerk Burns, for your historical tour on June 5th, 4th.
9th.
9th. Or you had one on June 4th on transportation. That's right. All right. With that, we have no other trustee comments. We don't have any matters for closed session this evening. Item 10, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned until June 24 at 7:30. Thank you.